Monday, September tenth, twenty eighteen, regular session in Animal City Council at City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich?
Here.
Kay?
Here.
John?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Cody?
Here.
Betty?
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, August twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Four point oh public hearings, four point one public hearing on proposed development agreement with Blue Max Enterprises Incorporated, including annual appropriation, tax, incremental payments. And I'll open the public hearing. I haven't heard anything about any comments or anything on this.
I haven't received any.
Has there been any public input submitted to City Hall?
No.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
First by Rod, second by Betty to close the public hearing. Is there anything else we need to do with that? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Four point two public hearing on proposal to sell and convey the old hospital site to Weber Stone Company. And I'll open the public hearing. Has anybody?
I was approached by a person questioning why two other people, i.e. above hotshots, we sell city property for what the city has in it, and in this case, we were not doing such. I had no comment. I think sometimes people think that if that's the policy of the city is to sell the city property for what the city has in it, that we should probably in the future do the best we can to do it the same for everyone. That's been the only comment I've had on this.
I heard that too.
No other public feedback, Jacob?
I, I haven't received any.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
First by Rod to close public hearing, second by Cody. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations, none. Counsel action items. Seven point oh community betterment. Seven point one discussion of possible action on resolution approving and accepting the work done by Boomer previously referenced excavating.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Kay. Any discussion?
Well, Jacob, I imagine it was you that sought out the questions and provided us with the information.
Yes.
They did not provide, at the time, we extended this. There was an explanation. But they did not provide any additional information as to why they missed the deadline originally of November seventeenth, who had to be extended to January fourth. So my inquiry at the last meeting-
With the, the line going down Walworth, is that?
There were, there were others that it took three days to find a locate over at Loxie and Park.
One other thing that did happen is we did have a lady drive through Wet Smith over in front of Second Street West Station Road. And they had rip it all back up and replaced it.
And whose responsibility was it to quarantine that area so public access could not be gained?
I, I can't honestly answer that.
I think I already know the answer to that question.
I'm just telling you what happened.
So, I, I fully understand the liquidated damages and the difficulty in retaining that. The fact that there was ten days, ten to fourteen days of no activity on part of this project because they were elsewhere, just to me did not sit well with the public in that time. It still does not sit well with me today. I, I understand we would have more in litigation than we would be compensated. Delays like that, that are within their control, we should give strong consideration on future projects.
You done, Rod?
Yes.
Okay. Judy?
Yes. Hi, my name is G. Rose. I live at two oh six South Davis. I've lived at this address for fourteen years. I'm here tonight to address the promise you as the council made to the citizens living along the Second Street Sewer Project. You promised that our property would be returned to the same condition as before the construction. However, it has turned out this promise has been broken. I had contacted the city clerk twice with their city administrator in attendance once regarding this problem. Both times, I was told they would take care of it. Both times, someone came out, took a look, never to be seen again. Here it is in September, and all I have is a weed patch instead of a healthy patch of grass. Back in May, I've got pictures that shows how impossible it was to mow this patch of ground. It was impossible to get the mower through without damage to the mower. I was told this would be taken care of before the final payment would be made. To my surprise, when I read in the paper that they were requesting final payment, with few council members wanting to grant them the payment. Have they forgotten the lesson that they are elected officials responsible to the voters? Please advise me what action you are planning on taking on this. And who in the world my parking be restored to the original condition? Thank you. And I've got the pictures on my phone if anybody wants to see them.
Has this been brought up to the council before this moment? Okay, so there's one answer. This first we're hearing on it.
Cause I kept waiting to have, because I talked to Tammy and that, nothing's been done.
So I'm just checking that I wasn't the only one that missed anything. So second, is this a project where money is held back for things like this that can?
Cause that parking is a mess and I've got a sign out there for everybody to see it.
But, uh, I did look into it. I, I received your, your concern. I did look into it, discussed with the engineer and, and this is what I was provided with, and I apologize for not communicating that back to you, but, uh, I, I received, uh, basically the photo from May when the engineer inspected the, the area and it seemed to be returned back to the original state.
Just a moment.
So you don't, the repaintage may not cover this?
I am not sure, but I, I think that's, I was-
Those pictures were taken in May.
That was-
The current one is down there. Plus the sign that I put out was covered just in-
So in May was the top one?
It was the top one that I couldn't get out and get a mower through to even mow.
And then this is now? Is that your sign?
That's my sign. That is a horrible weed patch and everybody that's a neighborhood conversation piece.
I'll pass.
That is not returned to the previous condition.
I'm not laughing at your yard.
Oh, I know. The sign, I spent some time on that.
Um, I guess I don't understand what good's a retainer if it's not to make sure the project is complete? And if this is part of the project is to get things back? If, if part of the project was to return the property back to the original condition, why that wouldn't cover it? Okay.
Was it the responsibility of the the construction company that was doing work on the project to reseed and re-landscape?
They came out and reseeded, but that's what came up.
The seed was weeds?
It was weeds.
So it's not something that was the city's responsibility?
No, it wa- no, it was the contractor's responsibility. All I'm saying is, again, I looked into the issue and the engineer, their opinion was that it was returned to previous state.
So they obviously hydro seeded other parts of that project?
Yeah. As far as I'm aware, they hydro seeded the entire
And they did banana park?
Correct, yeah.
In this section here, they had dug up a huge hole. And that's where all the weeds are. It's where they had dug up. It was a huge hole.
So are you thinking it needs to be tilled back up and some grass?
Oh, it needs to be tilled back up and grass put down, not that spray, because when they went and sprayed that green stuff, that's where the weeds came from.
They, maybe the quality of the spray they got.
Right. I'm just asking to have it put back where it was before. And that was the promise the city had made. And there's others along Second Street that have problems too, but nothing quite this severe. So anyway, I just wanted to come and see.
Have we gotten complaints from other people on Second Street?
I have.
That had the same type of work done in their property?
They know better.
Well, I don't know if the rest of the council has the opportunity to view those photos. I would not say that is-
I don't know if that means they know better.
Judy? Judy? We've seen the pictures of that. We need to move on.
So I, I would not say that's acceptable. It, it would not be acceptable to me. Maybe the engineering firm has a whole nother level of acceptability.
That, those, I've, the ones are very different than the ones that I, just showed from the engineer.
So did the engineer show like, show it finished and the spray down before the grass came up, maybe?
Um, I don't have photos of that, of when they actually did the hydro seeding, if that's a draft.
Dan?
Yeah?
Did you inspect?
I did not.
Any of this?
It could have been the, did germinate and when we did have that dry hotspot, it could have killed it out and the weeds could have took over, but I'm sure it'd be reseeded.
Smoothed out and reseeded?
Yep.
So that we can get, make Judy happy?
Yep.
Is, is that something, I mean, can we find out if the retainer can pay the city to do that?
So I've driven by it. It's very tall. Is it, is it too rough to mow, Judy?
Oh, yes. There was, oh, whatever they had laid down the first time, it had come out. And they tried, you know, the ones that mowed, they tried to go through it and it couldn't get out, damaging the land.
So there was, there's ruts in your yard?
Oh. It needs to be tilled and used with grass and up else where.
I wonder too, if they dug that deep a hole, did they get some poor quality soil on top that maybe didn't germinate? If it was worse than the other, maybe needed more fertilizer or something there.
That they took the clay that was laying there and just smoothed it back over.
Certainly be several variables as to why, you know, the grass did not germinate, grow, uh, but.
Needs to be done, right?
Yep. Yeah, there's, I mean, let's just get it taken care of.
This is, I was gonna send it to the email, but I'll just show you guys. This is the picture I was received from the engineer.
And it's kinda hard to see if that's-
It's, I mean, it's much different than
Then maybe it was a different spot, Jacob, wasn't it?
You guys see that?
It seems to be the same. I, I can't, I didn't take the picture.
That don't look that good from here anyway. I mean, it's pretty spotty coming up.
So we need to have somebody go and take care of it?
I'd be glad to go take care of it. It's our council.
Well, I think we need to find out if the retainer that's withheld to make sure project's complete dissatisfaction should cover this. I mean, I guess I'm okay with whoever takes care of it, but each time a contractor comes in, we're holding a retainer and then we're doing extra work and giving them back the retainer, um, that sounds like a pretty good gig they have.
Dan, do you wanna get a hold?
I'll get a hold of Bud tomorrow and we'll take care of it. How's that?
All right. Any further discussion?
Jake, are you gonna find out the retainer that we're holding? Can we can take a portion to pay?
But I, I, yeah, I'll check into it.
Should. I think that's what it's for. The project is completed correctly. It's part of it.
Yeah, I don't want to see a habit of the city picking up the slack of contractors and then now we as a city are overworking under staff, but yet we're out doing that stuff. And I appreciate that, Dan.
Well, he can, he can get all the contractors, make sure they get it done and done right. All right, and this is a roll vote.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Seven point three discussion of possible action on resolution approving development agreement with Blue Max Enterprises Incorporated, including annual appropriation, tax increment, payments.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rod. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question. If, um, let's say in five years, they decide to sell the property.
Yes.
Does the tax increment follow the property? Does it cease at that point in time?
Can I answer that for you? Only because I can relate it to American Lodging Suites. They had a transfer of ownership. So what they would have to do is they would have to come up, the seller and the buyer would have to come up with a transfer agreement. And that would include passing that tip on to the next person, um, if they agreed on the terms of the tax payments and when it would take effect, only for the terms of the development agreement as it sits.
Okay, so if that's the case, then this twenty-five thousand follows the property for until twenty-third?
It, it, it stayed with the property.
Until, until the twenty-five thousand.
And I believe any transfer would have to be also approved through the city. It's not just between the two of them.
Right. It'd be done by resolution through the bonding attorney.
So it could potentially create a problem. I mean, if, if we don't possibly agree to the transfer, then what's it due to the grant money that they received?
That, yeah.
I mean, there's-
There, there could be issues, um. I'm not, I, I have no way to say what the, uh, economic development, uh, division would say to that. You know, in terms of maintaining the grant.
I guess if the prob- if the purpose is for improvement of the property and it goes with the property and the property is the purpose of why we're doing this.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the length of this and how it, if the property would transfer.
I'm trying to figure out why whoever's sitting in this chair at the time would not approve to keep that.
Well, I'm not saying-
The next person would have to uphold their end as well.
Yeah, they're gonna have to do whatever, I mean, there's, there potentially could be an issue down the road that we don't foresee right now. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball.
It's, it's solely based on the payment of property taxes, I'm not including. So if the taxes are paid by either Casey and Doug or a new owner, the, the end result is still the same.
Um, then the next question I have, can we require full insurance coverage on that property?
Like being named a part beneficiary?
No, just to make sure that if something should happen to the property in the future,
No fire.
it's fully insured so that we're not in this position again.
I would like to see that the property is insured for full replacement value since we're investing the money in it so that we don't have this shortcoming again.
I would think that could be stipulation.
Doug, do you know what full replacement value on that building would be for insurance?
Six hundred and seventy thousand. And that's what we actually have.
You have it.
But that's a, that's a valid request, but it is actually required by IDA also.
Okay.
Uh, and we have to fight that.
But I think it ought to be written into our agreement too, for the term that we're looking at.
Okay.
We suggest that we get a copy of that each December, because I think you're gonna be there every December.
Okay. I mean, at the, well, I know that it says something in here, like October, I think it's October fifteenth or by October fifteenth, you're providing a copy evaluation or something. I can't remember the exact date, but
It is October fifteenth.
So if that's the case, let's tie it to that.
All right. But this is a roll vote also.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Seven point four discussion of possible action on resolution approving the sale and conveyance of old hospital sites to Weber Stone Company.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any further discussion?
So for our conversation, Jacob, uh, any, any rights, right of ways or, uh, access into, out of the property? By reading that, it's been secured, so all of a sudden, we don't see a fence that's put up.
Trying to pull up the resolution there. I'll point out where it talks to that. Do you have that for me, Rod?
Yes. The resolution does provide for an easement to allow county access to the facilities.
Yeah, so there's, there's the two different properties to the test. The county has the storage building in the back, uh, northwest corner and then their offices across from there. And there's easements for both those properties.
So on the backside of the hospital, the drive-through, that is not an alley that extends eastward to other private property?
So to the best of my knowledge, it's, uh, not a flatted alley behind the hospital itself, but it may be further east where it's actually between the, uh, residential properties. So this does not cover, uh, an easement to that alleyway that's not an actual alleyway?
So at the end of North Garnaville, when it comes into an alley and curves around there going into the hospital, will be an access to nowhere?
Bu- behind to the hospital?
Correct. From north, you get to the top of North Garnaville and go in between Harvey and Pam's house and it curves around and goes behind the hospital. That's the city owns that alley.
To a point.
Right, that's where I'm going. So that alley will be a dead end and go nowhere.
Well, I guess that would be up to the new property owner. Right now, there's no easement requiring it stay open. It's an extension of North Garnaville Street, right?
Yeah. Which, like I think Betty said last meeting, could close it and sell it to each prop- each side of the property owners and be done with it. Cause I'm not even sure they're maintaining that street anymore.
Well, the city-
They, they smooth it out and-
Well, I'm, yeah.
There was some damage done to the alley, which is creating some wash off into the properties.
It used to be blacked out and now it's just broken up, so.
Any further discussion?
Well, I do wanna respond to Betty's comment during the public hearing about the differences between the different sales, pot- potentially. Um, the one that you were referring to above hotshots, that's a zero interest loan on that property. So there is some differences in how things may be structured.
And I agree. I mean, I just-
Not, not all sale is identical.
And I, I just wanted to put it out there so that when they watch the video, I did address it. And I I just wanted to put it out there so that when they watched the video, I did address it.
Anything further?
Our request of trying to recoup the expenses the city had in this property. Webber Stone was not favorable in paying that either. The only, the only amount they were willing to pay was the dollar.
And I'm in agreement with getting it back into the tax roll and, I mean, there's, I, yeah.
There's there's a lot that goes into this, so.
Oh, sure.
And it's a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Excuse me, Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Seven point five, discussion and possible action on ordinance amending chapter fifty-three of the city code to prescribe new regulations for lawn maintenance and impose penalties for violations thereof.
So this, uh, was an ordinance that we, I think it was Clear Lake, Iowa, and it just addressed some of the issues we were having in terms of enforcement. Primarily, the difference is, uh, between what our current ordinance states is it unifies the length requirement. Right now, we have an eight-inch requirement in residential and commercial and a ten-inch requirement in, uh, uh, agricultural and industrial. And this just makes it ten across the board. So I guess in that aspect, it gives some leanness, but, uh, it tightens up the notice requirement so that we can actually act on things, um, specifically the grass that ends up in the street and then in the storm drain. Um, right now, if we follow our notice requirements, uh, it's usually washed down into the storm drain before somebody can take action, uh, or we can require that somebody clean it up. Uh, this will allow us to move faster, only provide a notice by mail once per summer season and then, uh, we can abate upon the necessity to do so.
So when you say to provide notice, so for the people in the community who are habitual offenders and every season we go through this with the same people, are you saying that in the spring they can get a notice, notifying them that this year the expectation is that they're will be done and kept up and this will be the consequence if not?
In the, by this ord- the ordinance that we're discussing, every spring we would put, uh, a copy of this ordinance in the local newspaper th- on somebody's first offense. If we notice that, uh, their grass is exceeding the ten inches, we would send them a letter by mail explaining, you know, the abatement process, you know, what they have to do. We'd go through those steps. Uh, but after that point, we would have no further requirement to send notice by mail if we find the grass to be, uh, exceeding the length requirement. We could go through a process where they'd have it lowered and build property.
So what's our timeframe on abatement then? If we see it get to ten inches, we can just roll up with a mower and have at it?
So, and specifically in the this ordinance, it it sets kind of the enforcement dates, um, so it's not just as needed that we're doing two or three here, two or three there, but it kind of gets everybody in a, maybe a repetition, but, uh, it specifically puts these requirements at the fifteenth, uh, I think it's the fifteenth.
The first and the fifteenth.
The first and the fifteenth of each month, so that, uh, yeah, on on, uh, after the first notice, it it goes through, it's really just abate, there's there's not a timeline given because again, especially with the grass in the street, it doesn't take long before it's gone. And not gone anyway that we're wanting it to be.
So, um, go over this first and the fifteenth for me one more time, cause I'm struggling with it. It says, um, the mowing requirements of this section above shall be completed by the first and the fifteenth. So twice a month, I need to mow my grass.
The way I would say this is going to play out, uh, actually is just that you mow your grass whenever you want, but we'll most likely have our people go out on the second and the sixteenth, uh, check, check things over. And if, you know, somebody who is a repeat offender at that point, then we can take action or if their first, first offender will send the notice.
And am I missing where it says the grass cannot be put in the street or is that gonna be a separate thing?
It it's, uh, it's not specifically listed in this ordinance, but it's included in our current ordinance, so, um.
So if this is re-
It's it's covered, i- it's it's remains in the code.
Okay.
That section's requiring that the grass stay out of the street.
So if this is replacing, this isn't replacing the current order?
It's replacing parts of, but not the entire thing. It it's specifically point by point addressed which parts are taken out, which parts replaced.
Okay. Alright.
Uh, so.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, a little clarification on on vines.
Okay.
On what?
Vines, cause it's a, yeah, it it says vine. So if somebody's got a decorative vine that's twelve inches high, we're gonna cut it?
Oh, vines, God.
I guess that was kind of a question for, as well. And and I guess to be clear, I'm, uh, not necessarily saying this is ready to go as is, but just to start the discussion. I I noticed that myself and was not sure how that is enforced the same as it grass or.
Cause I mean, somebody could have their lawn perfect all the time, but with that term in there, all of a sudden, we're gonna go in and cut it off?
Mow down my graves?
My sunflowers?
My future wine.
Well, noxious weeds could be in the eyes of the beholder too. Hasn't there been a problem in the city?
I think it's spelled out.
Yeah, there's a, there's a definition for noxious, noxious weeds.
Noxious weeds, or my Iowa State Extension.
Yeah.
I can look into making sure the definition for noxious weeds and and further question on if vines needs to be removed.
And would you get in touch with, um, our police chief and just go over it so his department understands? And this is something that's enforceable for them, you know, and they're the ones doing the work?
Yeah.
I want them to be very clear on it and I don't want it to be hard for our officers to understand, cause then we'll be back at square one.
They've they've had to review, we haven't had the time, mostly on my, my part to discuss it in detail yet, but that was always on the agenda to be done.
Well, and I want to make sure that with this, the whole s- grass in the street is addressed. And my neighborhood, there was, one of the lots that never gets mowed, got mowed today. And it's on the corner and it has the storm sewer right there and laying right next to the storm sewer. I mean, that side of the street is partially green. It's like got so much grass out there and I thought, oh, I'm glad it's not raining this week. And I think it really needs to be addressed. I don't think a lot of people know you cannot put grass in the street.
But I don't think they know, not only do they not know why they can't put it in the street, they don't know why it's important, but they don't put it in the street.
Right.
I think we need some education.
Right. And I would like to see that somehow.
Yeah, me too.
We've worked on those issues. I mean, I know we discussed that, uh, both on social media. I think we had a segment in the paper on it. Um, so we're working on it. It's not perfect, but.
And maybe on our Facebook page or on our.
And send letters to these people.
Just completely, complete reminders, because it takes a lot of repeated teaching sometimes to get the point across.
Mike Dearborn, four oh five North Division. Might sound like a broken record, but let's not enforce ordinances that our own city workers are violating. Or or mowing, just, I see it all the time, where city workers throwing grass in the street. It's pretty common. So we need to address that. That's a pretty easy fix. I agree, we shouldn't be throwing grass in the street.
Thanks, Mike. So do we wanna wait till this gets?
Yeah, I I'll check in with the questions we've had. If there's any others, uh, sent my way, we'll have something.
Okay.
So we'll table this one.
I like that we're addressing it though.
Hi, I'm Macy Sapina. I live at one oh six Teresa Avenue. We have a property owner that's just north of our house. Who has let his weeds grow all summer long and they are at least thigh high. He went in earlier in the summer when they got really deep and he grated them all off. He didn't mow them, he grated them. Now they're all growing up again and nobody ever mows them. And it's a, it's a real eyesore down there. And so I think that, I think that our police chief should go down there and check that out.
What was the address again?
I live at one oh six Teresa Avenue, but I think it's like one sixteen Teresa Avenue or one eighteen. It's it's there where the the apartments are, the duplexes. And I think he's getting ready to build something else too.
Thank you, Macy.
Yes.
Seven point six, discussion and possible action on ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco, nicotine products and electronic smoking devices in public parks.
Some of.
Second.
First by Cody, second by.
Take your pick.
I'll go with John, Mr. Jacob.
Just, uh, real quick, uh, a discussion with, uh, Jeff, um, there was a few, few sections that he thought, um, we should consider including, and I hadn't had a chance to bring this to Adrian's attention, um. So this copy has his suggest- uh, suggestions, which basically, uh, I think, uh, he felt that the LCC wasn't specifically included. I don't know, um, if that would be included under other law, but, um, that that is added. His his additions are in italics and then there's three sections in the back, which again, makes sense to me, but, uh, I think it was the enforcement clause that's required, uh, we can get free signage, um, which may help us enforce this.
What do you mean, the LCC's not including?
Just by the definition, um, it specifically said outdoor parks or outdoor recreational facility. I'm I'm not sure, but I I would think being an indoor public facility, it has to be covered under some other public law.
The city, like no city.
But I'm, I'm not sure on that.
Like on city properties such as the pool and s- city hall and wouldn't it, uh, library and would the LCC fall under that?
I I I would think it would fall under something else. A pool, I think, would not, but just because it's, again, it, I'm not sure, but being an outdoor facility, it's.
Okay.
Are the sidewalks city property or?
It's, that's a, I mean, they're, uh, right of, they're part of the right of way, it's public right of way. They're, but they're not like, they're they're different than city property like the the city hall is.
So what's that gonna do to the bars that have people smoking outside on the sidewalk? Is that gonna be?
Does that make the sense? This does not cover that. That that's not, this is just addressing the parks, public, public recreational facilities.
I think the key word is recreational facilities.
Must be even that.
So in two thousand eight, state banned smoking in all public indoor spaces, so that's why the LCC is covered under July one, two thousand eight smoking ban.
Right. Outside of the LCC?
Well, that was what Jeff was referring to, outside of the LCC. You know, it's not exactly a park like.
We have found it, huh?
It is a recreational facility. Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's a recreational.
But, you know, they're they're parking lot, you know, right outside. I know Tyler was mentioning it as well, the residential. So it wasn't entirely clear by the ordinance it would cover that, so this would just specifically mention that, since it's not necessarily an outdoor facility.
Sure.
Okay. So I mean, I think this is certainly good ordinance. I don't know if, uh.
It's a great ordinance.
If we want to, I I can, again, check on some of these details with Adrian and and, uh, uh, look to address it again next meeting unless we have a discussion.
So you wanna vote on this or wait for the?
We should probably make sure it's in its finalized form.
Alright, so we'll just table this one.
Apologize for.
You too, Wes.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And John?
Alright, so we'll table that and tell. Adrian's got a chance to look over all of it. Alright, seven point seven, discussion and possible action regarding stormwater problems on Chamber Drive within the Meadow Ridge Development.
So we've been looking at this for a long time, uh, it's certainly not a straightforward issue. Um, I was last out there with our, with one of the engineers we work with and, uh, current developer, uh, I I guess was expecting it to be worse than it was. It was, uh, last thir- this is last Thursday afternoon, there was some standing water, um, not as much as I expected, I guess, uh, with with the extreme amount of rains, rain that we received, um. There there's discussion of different ways that we could, uh, address, you know, help, help improve drainage of the stormwater, but, uh, I guess ultimately, I think the best approach at this point is to try to get a meeting with the property owners, um, and get some sort of idea of where, what the consensus is there, because we can't, I don't see any solution going forward without agreement between all, all of those property owners. Um, and and that's really been the first step in getting someone.
So the city would have to obtain an easement through all the backyards?
Uh, if if the city was going to do anything, yes, uh, we would have to get easement. Nothing's to say that if a, you know, four property owners wanted to get together and put in something like a drywall or whatever, I I think they could find an agreement and do that. I don't know if that would solve the problem or not, but before the city takes action and and has the engineer study, see, we need to have, uh, more communication with with all of the property owners. But I, you know, there's no sense in us spending money to come up with a solution and then not have agreement there.
Yeah.
Did, uh, the developer and, uh, engineer have?
Did uh the developer and the engineer have some type of a consensus on what they think should be done, or were they?
There was a couple of different options. I mean, uh without studying it further, I mean, you could be ready to go in and just put a a pipe with some beehives or or inlets uh throughout the area and then run it to run it to the storm drain that is along uh Meadow Ridge, uh but that that's gonna be, I mean, that's gonna be your best solution, but your most expensive, I mean, uh tens of thousands of dollars, um. You could also go much cheaper and and try s- try something that may not work as far as just uh trying to run a small pipe on uh along the uh first proper first couple of properties there next to Meadow Ridge and see if the water would would drain out without doing the full length of of the properties.
I do have something to say about that. Before you allow someone to build, and I don't even know if some of the builders even get permits, I'm not sure. But before you allow them to build, you might save a lot of money by having engineers coming in and t- showing them how to solve all these problems without the houses ever being built. That's what you do. They do it in Cedar Rapids, they do it in other cities, but here it seems like if you wanna build something, you just build it anywhere you wanna build it. And they don't come to the city and they don't have engineers go out and check out the property to see if you're gonna have proper drainage and save a lot of heartbreak for people in their homes. And I think that's something that really needs to be addressed. I now I don't know why it's not done, and maybe it is, and I don't know about it. But as far as I'm concerned, in my experiences with a certain builder in this town, he does not comply with any of our regulations at all, and that includes the mowing.
Are you in favor of building codes in Anamosa?
Absolutely.
Just asking.
Of course I am. Aren't you?
Hmm.
Mm-hmm. Well, you're on the city council and you think about that.
Oh, I have for two years have occasionally brought it up.
I think it's something that needs to be addressed in this community. It's a terrible problem that we have.
And it's been brought up before, even before I was on the council and it gets shot down.
So how come it gets shot down? Why does that get shot down?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm in favor of it, so I don't know.
Well, money? Well, who would it cost? The city? The developer? He might have to spend some money.
The builders? They, they.
Mayor, I would like to stay on task with the discussion related to the stormwater problems at this time.
They, well, I have he because I don't want. Well, I'm just saying, it's stormwater that comes that comes down on our street too.
I hear. I've heard I've heard Jermaine say.
Because of what he builds.
Do not at this time need to have the discussion on building codes because
Are you kidding me?
The agenda item now.
It's about building codes.
The agenda is regarding the stormwater, not building codes.
Building codes is building where you should not build and not putting the proper drainage in before you build that property.
Rod, I apologize. I'm the one that brought it up in the preliminary of building.
That's what it's about. No, it's fine. That's the way it should be. You should have building codes.
So I actually walked up through the backyards, um on the fifth in the rain, and there is um uh it seems like the houses on the uh Council Street side, um actually have started to put some of a swale to curb some of that water coming off.
Well, I that was what I was gonna point out. I I um I think
Some measures have been taken.
They're they're I think the the developers uh on Council Street side have done a pretty good job of retaining the water on those properties. That's where the, when I was out there, that's where the water was sitting, was on Council Street properties, not in between because there is not an easement.
Right.
On Council Street. Now, that again, that was several days after the rains, but um there is there's still somewhat of a swale there.
So it it seems to me the houses that have not all of them, but a few of them that have been put up since this has been brought to the city council, they've tried to take some measure to not dump their stormwater on the neighboring property.
So when they build these or put these swales up, where does it take the water? Where does the water go?
Across the, by the property.
Well, it's going from one, it it's staying on all the properties on Council Street.
To some.
Well.
But it is going from one neighbor to the next. Eventually around to the street, I assume. I didn't walk that far to the to the south.
So when they're doing that, are they putting in any re- type of delays on down so that it's just not a strong flow?
Gosh, yeah, that's what I was.
Are are they kind of tapering it down?
It's pretty flat, so it it doesn't have a lot of scouring, so.
I'm Linda Lyons. I live on four twenty-three Chamber Drive. Uh I would like to ask on September seventh, there were three people that went up and down the path there. Could you tell me, Jacob, who those three people were? One was an engineer, I understand.
That was myself. That was myself, an engineer the city works with and and I represent for the developer.
Uh this engineer, was this an independent person or was this someone that uh has represented Reckless Construction in the past?
I don't know all their clients, but uh it's it's an engineer the city works with, um.
It was a city engineer? Where did you?
It's it's an engineer. It's they're from Snyder Associates.
And this is somebody the city gets all the time?
We work with them regularly on wastewater projects.
Um I'm curious because you were there then, so maybe are any of these people here tonight, by the way? Is the engineer here?
I was there. She was not able to attend.
Or what about uh somebody with from Reckless Construction? Is anybody here to represent them that I could ask some questions?
Not that I'm aware of.
So you're the only one then that basically was there?
Yes.
That I can ask. I would like to know, um there are approximately four or five swales put in by the construction company. I don't know if it's the one and the same, but they're there. Um do you realize that there is a law against having a swale put in that is going to force water onto private property? And that's exactly what's happening here. Somebody should check with the city attorney. You cannot, you cannot have water be dispersed from, somebody cannot have put in a swale and force the water down onto my backyard and expect me to have to get it out between my house onto the street. That's crazy.
It's hard I could tell all the swale put in on to the newer developed houses were to retain the water on their properties.
Who approved them?
There was no approval process.
No approval. It was just not.
That I'm aware of anyway.
I would suggest you check with your city lawyer because this is not, you cannot do that.
But but again, they're they're they appear to be retaining the water more than.
Yeah, are they? My whole backyard was covered with water and it goes down the sides. When we get a heavy rain, maybe when you were there, it wasn't raining.
I I don't doubt that it flooded on their property.
I mean, there was actually, I have I have neighbors here that can verify. It was like a river coming down through there one day. It was terrible. And we have found out that there is mold on our ground underneath this grass. This is an environmental issue even. You cannot have that water come down here at periodic times. It's not gonna dry out. And we have got mold accumulating on our lawn. In fact, I I'm getting a sample tested because this is not something that we want in our neighborhood. You know, I I have one question. This is a new development. Uh gee, when you get into a new development, you build a new house or you have a nice house, who in the heck thinks about that the city isn't gonna give you a sewer, a a storm sewer drain? Who thinks about? That you think about it when you watch your house? Or you, or you, or you, or any of you? You expect the storm sewer drain to be there to provide a drainage, not to run over my neighbor's yard. I was told when we first moved there, we put in three French drains in the front yard at a very expensive amount. And I was gonna do something in the backyard because at that time we had a little bit of a problem. There was no houses built back there. Well, I was told very bluntly by legal counsel, you cannot put a swale in or anything that is gonna divert water onto your neighbor. You can't do it or you will be sued. And that's the way it was, so we didn't do it. So I have come to the council a year and a half or two years ago and I have been here constantly trying to get something done peacefully, trying to get you to understand. We didn't create this problem and those new houses certainly were put in after this problem and I brought it to your attention. And this problem is growing and growing and growing. And it's like, oh gee, well, it only rains once in a while or just a, that doesn't matter. The pressure on our foundation from all of this accumulated water, you walk in my backyard, really walk on that grass. It's like a sponge. It hasn't dried out. And I know several of my neighbors can say the same thing. And we have got already a little ditch kinda coming down through there and I I tried to walk across it the other night and I thought I was gonna spring my ankle because it is so rough and so ruddy and even the erosion coming down the hillside. We need to have the city, I know it's a bad situation, but somebody made a mistake and it needs to be corrected before more damage is done. Or this ends up in a legal litigation problem for everybody. This this should not be. We should be able to see what's happening. Ask yourself, would you want this in your backyard? You want a ditch cut? Oh gee, we'll put a ditch in now to get the water down. Would you want it in your backyard, any of you? And not only that, but what came down through there in July when we had that heavy rain, no, no little thing would have even carried that water. It was bad, real bad, and going between our houses and lashing against the side of our house. Some people had a lot more problems. There's one person that has a boat in basement window. How long before the basement wall gives? So I'm appealing to all of you to please take a good look at the situation. I know it's an expense, but we should not, as private property owners, have to go together, pay for any of this. We did not cause it. We in all good faith built new homes, bought new homes, or came in there. We didn't benefit anything from anybody. And we come in there without knowing the problem. Nobody told anybody. We just waited till the rain came and gee, what are we gonna do now? Well, buy a boat? I don't mean to be sarcastic about it, but I have come here so many times, I'm getting burned out. And I've come to the conclusion that I would like a decision made by the city council as to rectify the situation and I'd also like a copy of the engineer's report from that visit down through the thing. You know, the mold on my lawn doesn't have to be necessarily verified with the dirt. Go walk the sidewalk. Look at the mold on the sidewalks. Look at the mold on the driveways. And you know what? When winter gets here, you know what we have? We have icy sidewalks. We have icy driveways. And you know who's liable liable for that? If anybody falls down, we are. Why are we liable for water that drains off my neighbors and comes down the hill and across my sidewalk? In the meantime, it's gotta go over my yard and through my between my house to get to the sidewalk. My grandchildren come. They can't even play in the backyard because it's muddy. And some of the neighbors call, we have probably the worst for the mud hole. I I I thank you for your time, but I'm asking you to take a serious look at this situation and quit passing it, passing the buck till the next time. I don't wanna come here anymore. You don't wanna see me.
Linda, have you had this conversation with the developer yourself?
I don't feel, I don't, I'm first of all, I'm not sure if it's one developer, two, three, or who.
Okay.
I don't feel that it's really my responsibility. Again, I have had legal counsel tell me do not get together and try and fix it because I don't know anything about it. Would you?
No, but if I, I'm just asking if you have called and said to the developer or whoever
No, no.
And said, we have issues since houses have been built. Can you come look at it and see if he'd be willing to fix it?
What? What's he gonna do?
I don't know. I'm just asking.
He put in swales, didn't he?
That's kinda where we're sitting right now, though. We're.
I'm I'm just asking if.
No, I have not talked to the developer. I have not done research to find out if it's one, two, three, or who. All I know is that when I first came here, before the top level houses were built, somebody should have got in there and done something. If there was an opportunity, go right over the hill. And the city could have worked with the developer or ers or whatever they are and tried to find a solution. It needs to have, we need to have an engineer, somebody that knows the problem, that knows how to solve it. Work with the city and with the, not me. I'm not an engineer. I don't have a degree. We need somebody that knows what they're doing to fix the problem and do it right. A mistake was made, let's just get over it and fix it before something else happens or lawsuits end up from this because I'm I'm bushed. I'm tired of coming here. I'm tired of arguing with you. This is not my responsibility. I bought a house in good faith a year and a half, two years ago. I love my home. I love my neighbors. They're great people. We're all on the same boat. I thank you for your time and.
I'll sit down.
Well, and I think that's where Jacob wants to try to get everybody together because if you say yes and your neighbor says no and so forth, it's gotta be a consensus. And that's where he wants to try to get everybody together to talk about, here's the options, here's what we can do, and work with everybody to get it done.
And we want this fixed just as much as you do.
Well, then Jacob, you get the people together. We'll all come. You'll find a place. It's not my responsibility to convince everybody and be a pest.
I would like this.
Well, and I think that's.
That's that's what I was indicating, yeah.
You you have a meeting and get everybody together. And I I personally think everybody would probably uh sign um a temporary easement, not a permanent one, but a temporary one with stipulations it would go for storm sewer drains. Nobody wants a ditch. If you're gonna talk that, forget it because I haven't had one person that wants a ditch put in there. For number one, who wants the liability? Who's gonna maintain it and keep it clean? And what about all the the bugs and all the crap that's gonna be there? We don't want that. We didn't buy into it. We don't want it. So you come up with a good, something that's gonna give us a storm sewer drain, we'll get together and talk.
Well, yeah, there's there's a lot of details there. I mean, again, uh I I don't know that it's appropriate to get at all of them right now, but uh
And I'm gonna.
I mean, if you're gonna do any work, you're, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of complications about why we need to get the property owners together because if somebody's got a fence on the property line right now, it's gonna have to come out if we're doing any work because it's gonna have to be on that property line, not three feet over there or it's it's gonna happen.
Well, then, may I make a suggestion? You get an engineer in there and get a report and let's see what you're gonna have. We aren't gonna sit down and talk about something that's just.
It 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 does make sense for us to have an engineer at at cost do work before we know if we can even have access to the property. And that's why I think the first first thing is to get all the property property owners on board.
I'm gonna guess that you guys are here tonight because it's on the agenda. Right? Am I correct? Well, it's on the agenda because Jacob has gone out with an engineer, with the developer and walked it. And everybody here is saying, this is a problem. Where do we start? Who do we bring in? How do we fix it? What do we do? That's why it's on the agenda. So I'm gonna say, Jacob, kudos to you for going out there and walking it and putting it on the agenda and having us all address it. So the fact that you guys are thinking nobody's doing anything, I apologize that you feel that way because I think it's on the agenda so we can do something.
I'm not saying you're not doing anything.
I know, but I'm just saying.
I'm saying that we can't wait much longer. Our property is getting destroyed. And I I'm to the point that maybe we need legal counsel people to get in here and say, hey, this is your responsibility. You should come up with the plan. Why should we? And we're not gonna pay for anything. I can tell you that right now. If you think you're gonna get us together, we should all hire an engineer, we should all do this, it sounds real sweet, but it's not logical and it is not our problem to fix. I came here before that development. No, you didn't do anything. You could have stopped him to at least investigate the situation. Yeah, it's gonna cost you some money, but I got news for you. It's gonna cost you a lot more if you do nothing. Thank you.
Just like to have a minute of your time if I could, Mayor, council member. I'm new to your city. My name's Ralph Kepphart. My wife and Charlotte and I bought a new home at four oh two Council Street. We are also newlyweds. We moved into our home in the middle of February, wintertime, snow on the ground. We love our home. We love this area. We're both raised in small towns. It's where we wanna spend our golden years. We bought our home in good faith. Um I'm not having a water problem in my in my home per se. My basement's dry, yeah, my sump pump runs around the clock, this kind of weather, pumping the water out, but that's what it's supposed to do. My problem is at the back of my lot, I have a small lot. It's seventy-five feet wide and a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. Um we chose that simply because we didn't wanna spend our. We chose that simply because we didn't wanna spend our whole life in the summertime mowing and taking care of a lawn. We spend our time fishing. We have a cabin we go to and we spend most of our summer at the cabin. We only come back occasionally to take care of things around the house. When we bought our home, you know, they give you a disclosure sheet. And, you know, we looked it over and you can't really see what's going on, but it's very clear on this that. The developer said, you know, there's no problem with water. They also gave us a copy of some covenants. There's covenants on this line. That cover some situations like this that probably if you get us together, we need to really find out what's going on with the covenants. Specifically, there's, there's a covenants in here that I didn't happen to get a copy of. I've asked my developer for it, but they haven't responded to me yet. That says that we need to abide by a thing called an SWPP, which is a Storm Water Protection Plan. From the developer, Eagle Landview Development. Each lot owner shall be responsible for abiding by the rules set forth in this SWPP. I'd love to, but I don't know what the heck it is. I didn't get a copy of it. So there, there's some things that I think we need to look into. I'm not in abidance right now with your grass mowing. I have a strip at the back of my lawn. From my lot line to where it starts getting really wet, this swale thing you're talking about, it's not much. It's only about a little scoop. It's six feet in from where it starts getting wet. And then depending on the rain we get, it's anywhere from ten to, eight to ten feet in. Is wet enough that you can't walk in it without losing your shoes. I can't mow it. I can't reach in far enough with my weed whacker to whack the weeds down them. So this is really an inconvenience to me. I, I can't abide by your, your lawnmower. That's 'cause I, I can't touch it. Yeah, the water flows down through the neighborhood and I know there's rules that, you know, it's not supposed, I'm not supposed to let my water from my lot go on to my neighbors' lots. We have hired a contractor. We're gonna put in a couple of French drains. That won't solve the backyard thing. So I don't know what we need to do, but I'd like to see something done. That's about eleven percent of my property that's not usable currently. Not that I would wanna build anything back there, but it's just, you know, there's a lot of mosquitoes and a lot of bugs and the weeds look like that. Quite honestly. I, I'd encourage you to come take a look right now. Gonna try to mow the lawn in the next couple of days, but it's not gonna be dry enough to do much there. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Doug, we're gonna need one more comment. I mean, I've been before. I know you guys have got, you're looking for a short-term solution and that's good. But I would, I'd like you to think about a long-term solution. You guys work with Patrick at Snyder, don't you?
Uh, I work more with Lindsay.
Oh, with Lindsay? You with Patrick. Cities like this, like Monticello did, you don't have to have building codes. You can put in place things like SUDAS complacency. And that's all you really need to do. And then any developer comes to town or any commercial property gets built, has to be SUDAS required, or SUDAS compliant. And it spells out all the storm water management requirements.
Kind of compliant, I'm sorry.
SUDAS, S-U-D-A-S. It's the State Department.
We've discussed it and we are looking at adopting that.
Good call.
Thanks, Doug.
So you're gonna work on, try to figure something out for him?
Yeah, I, I guess my feeling would be best to get a meeting of just those property owners and, and discuss the issue. I think that's gonna be the most productive way to approach it.
You gotta have a first step, so.
That way.
Get them together and maybe have Lindsay or whoever Doug stated to work with and see if there can be some discussion that's beneficial.
And at some point, you have to bring the developers in. I mean, I get all this, but they need to step up. It, we know that.
Well, well, and the, the, it's complicated 'cause it's not, I mean, there's one current developer, but some of the, the lots on Chamber, you know, are not the same developer. And so that's some of the issue too is, um.
So the issue's not the ones behind them creating this?
I, I would say it's complex 'cause again. Part of, part of, one issue that has been brought up to me is that a lot of the lots on Chamber are fairly flat, so they don't provide for a whole lot of drainage.
By themselves before anything back there happens.
So when the water naturally comes off of some of the newer developments. They tend to pond rather than run off of, of the Chamber lots.
I think because the one, the one contractor, instead of all the dirt away, smoothed it up, so it was quiet.
I mean, there's really no way to address that because the foundation of the house is weird.
So it's a council street issue all on its own?
I, I.
I mean, it's.
It's not.
No.
It's, it's.
It's not. It's, it's Caitlin. It's Long Creek Golf Course. It's Chamber. It's.
But, you know, the, the developer is at fault here a little bit if they're not providing this gentleman with the documentation for the, the runoff. And if they're not doing that, what else have they hidden throughout this process?
Would it have been a deal breaker on my home? No, probably not. Because we love the home, we love the location. But it sure would've been an issue to talk about before we signed the papers.
Well, at least you would've had the knowledge of what you were getting into. Full knowledge.
And what are you gonna do?
Full disclosure.
What you gonna do? What you gonna do for me?
Yep. So the, the developer does have something to do with this.
Agreed. I'm just saying it's, it's not just.
Right. I, I know there's multiples there. There was multiple administrations through some of that development and so forth that had maybe different views on how to do things, but we're here today because of all of those things leading up to it.
So we'll let Jacob work on that one. Moving on, eight point O public safety. Eight point one motion approval renewal of beer and liquor license, renewal of class E liquor license, class B wine permit, class C beer permit, fairway storage. H number one sixty-six.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Eight point two discussion, possible action on to approve the street closures request for the October sixth, twenty eighteen Hump Jim Fest event.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any discussion?
Doug, are you representing?
Yeah. Doug Edel, two oh four East Walnut Street, and me and Boon's here also the Chamber Director.
Well, just, could you please clarify? One of the closures I see is from South Booth Street. From Main Street to the L. And it's requested to be closed until twelve P M. Is that a typo? Because above it, it says that you're gonna, following streets shall be closed to all traffic from six A M. To six P M on Saturday, October sixth. So twelve P M would be noon.
So it'd be.
Which street is it?
Eleven fifty-nine P M or twelve, twelve A M on the seventh.
Or midnight.
She'd be looking for midnight, correct though?
Right.
So that'd be twelve A M, right?
Right, that's a typo. So, um, we're making that request to close that part of South Booth Street. In anticipation that Teresa Tukin, Tucker's Tavern will be coming to City Council to get a permit to whatever she needs to have beer garden.
Yeah, she knows. She does it every year. She's gotta get it done before the Wednesday before the.
I talked to her this morning and me and us talked to her.
Okay, good job. So raise on the same page.
Anything else?
Nope.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Nine point O public works done, ten point O finance, ten point one discussion and possible action on pay requests numbers eight, nine, in the respective amounts of fifty thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. And ninety-nine thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-one. Nah, twenty-one cents retainage per terms of contract to Boomerang. Previously Rickless excavating for the second street lift station and sewer improvement project.
Move to approve of pay requests.
First by Cody.
Second.
Second by John.
So we're looking to pay the retainage?
This is not.
This is not the retainage.
And the retainage can only be held for thirty days?
Uh.
For the terms of the contract. They have to have the receipt of all the lien waivers from all the subcontractors before they can release, before we can. They have to show us those and then they can release the retainage.
So we, if we pay this. The seeding and grading on the private property will need to be done in thirty days.
I don't think that technically affects the retainage. The retainage is based on the release of the lien waivers?
Our release of what?
Lien waivers.
The, the, the receipt of the release of lien waivers from all the subcontractors as stated in your first resolution that you approved.
Okay, so then what, what are we gonna have to hold? That the project is completed in an acceptable condition? We'll have nothing at that time?
Because I think Dan and the contractor are gonna work with fixing that. That's wish, why you approved the first one.
Correct, but there's nothing.
Well, and, and I guess the confusion lies in I, I really based on the photos from, from our engineer, thought the issue was resolved, but if, if you guys feel that needs to be reseeded, um, that, that is gonna be, I mean. It would be great if, if the contractor just, you know, takes care of it. I, I can't guarantee that.
Based on Judy's photos, I wouldn't say that's acceptable.
So if we approve this now, the thirty days starts when?
You've already, you've already approved the acceptance of the project and the terms of the lien waivers. And receipt of that, that retainage thirty days starts from tonight.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So we've set that in motion already?
Correct.
Dan, Dan?
Yeah.
Just from your professional experience, how much do you think it's gonna cost to reseed that and level it off?
I could say under five hundred dollars, simply.
For Judy's property?
Correct.
Judy, did you not inform us that there were multiple residents? That have the same issue as you do?
Yeah, there, it's not quite as bad as what mine. And I just don't feel like it's gonna be worth it when we come.
So we'd be dealing with just rectifying your property owner?
Yeah, I think it's gonna cost maybe five hundred. For the amount. It's worth it.
I guess that whole, I get so confused on this part. So when we hire a contractor, but we're going to keep some, a retainage. That retainage gets released to the contractor upon completion as long as everything is done to satisfaction and there's no lien. Correct or not, correct?
I think the retainage is primarily to protect the subcontractor.
Correct.
It's not, it's not a, again, I, I, I was not here with the contractor to prove it. It's not to protect it.
This should've been a dress during a punch list.
Right, and this is part of where our engineers, from their, from their perspective, have approved the work. They believe it was met, returning to, to the original state based on the photos they provided. That's, that's why they're recommending, they, why they recommended and, and you guys voted for final acceptance and.
And because we're not the professionals, we count on their expertise to tell us it was done satisfactory.
Correct.
So if it's not the responsibility of the contractor, there's responsibility of the engineer. I mean, somebody's responsible other than the city having to pay for this.
Well, I mean, if, if, if they're incorrect, I mean, I guess, I guess right now we just have two conflicting photos. Is what, is what we're looking at.
Well, in, in the other part of this is, I, would you mind stepping up, please? I've got a question for you. You said you called City Hall and spoke to Tammy twice or came?
Twice. And once, the city administrator was.
And you said some people have come out and looked at it?
Right. Each time I came up and talked to Tammy, then she'd call somebody. I'm not sure.
Lindsay, the engineer, and she.
And, and they came out. My neighbors saw them come out. I didn't. They just stood there, looked around, left, didn't hear any more out of it.
Who looked at it?
I reported it to Lindsay and then she was gonna talk to Rickless, Boomerang. That was the first time. Second time I called her again, she was gonna address it.
I know they reseeded that stuff twice.
The third time when Judy called me also and when she talked to Jacob, so.
And like I said, yes, they did. They came out and they reseeded. But what they, what they put down was low grade. It did not go back to what it was before. It was grass, not weeds.
I will get with Rickless tomorrow and we'll get it rectified as soon as possible. So your seeding will be up for cold weather? Would that be?
Right, that's why, you know, I've been sitting here waiting and then I saw in the paper that this was gonna be discussed tonight. And I thought, well, maybe I better not wait any longer.
I will talk to Rickless.
Okay.
Take care of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Thanks. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Eleven point O city administrators report.
Not too much. May I just give you a kind of follow-up, uh, our recent flooding. Based on the information I, I was looking at on the National Weather Service, it's ranked as the third highest river elevation that they have on record. Uh, twenty-three point two eight feet. Uh, that's from the Shaw Road, uh, gauge. Uh, it crested on September seventh and it's been receding since then. Uh, last, I checked five P M today, it was at nineteen feet. Which is still categorized as a moderate flood level, but, um, we haven't had any, uh, issues or damages that I've been able to aware of. Uh, I, I know Buffalo Road was closed for a brief amount of time and there was some other county roads that were closed, but, um, it seemed to be that work from past flooding has resolved quite a bit of things. Cause we have had too many issues and we're expected to be below flood level by, uh, thirteen. Other than that, just another update on upcoming conferences, uh, League of Cities, uh, twelve through the fourteenth and, uh, ICMA, uh, twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. Any other questions or?
Are you attending both of those?
Yes. Yes. Following up.
Twelve point O, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Landfill meeting last Tuesday, what all they're doing, they got some old buildings there, they're gonna level and cap it out, still looking at the LED. And then, uh, nine one one, they've gotta spend quite a bit of money on the towers to get some boosters or whatever, so they can reach out all the, between the police, the D O T, the highway patrol, there's dead spots in Jones County, they're just, or ambulances go out and then they don't know if they're going the right place, they can't reach, so. That's a big thing to get improved, and the view's gonna go in with that and help pay, because you run right up to them to cascade, so. Sounds like they're gonna pay for part of that, so, should be a good thing for our safety. That's it.
Thirteen point O, public with business with accounts on items not on the agenda. Fourteen point O, city administrators evaluation. Motion to enter into closed session for Iowa State Code Section. Twenty-one point five I to evaluate the professional competency competency of an individual whose appointment hiring performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless impertinent entry to that person's reputation and that individual has requested a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Paraphrase it next time.
Hey, just stop at twenty-one point five up.
All in favor, if you like, if you get.
Yes.
Opposed?
We have, I have a minute?